Good, thank you.
Everybody, this is a council study session for the full council. The purpose of this meeting to hear from Dr. Ginger. We just released his second report. So this is the first time that the city council be able to have an opportunity to be able to publicly hear from Dr. Ginger in this report as well as be able to ask some questions and have some discussion. As usual, at all study sessions, we don't have any public comment, but this is, of course, a public meeting. And we do have some invited speakers that will share today. Also want to welcome U.S. Attorney Damon Martinez and his staff, as well as Chief Eden and his staff, and others that are here. I thank everybody for coming. We also have Rick Mier and Danny Watley, our co-chairs of the Mental Health Response Advisory Committee. Rick and Danny, thank you for coming. This is a committee that's mandated at the direction of the DOJ and the settlement agreement with the City of Albuquerque for the purpose of the committee to work with and provide guidance to APD and improve outcomes for individuals perceived to be or actually suffering from mental illness or experiencing a mental health crisis. This committee is comprised of 19 members from the command staff of APD, crisis intervention certified responders, the crisis intervention unit, crisis outreach and support team, city contracted mental health professionals, representatives from Albuquerque Department of Family and Community Services, UNM psychiatry department, community mental health professionals, advocacy groups for consumers and mental health services, mental health service providers, homeless service providers, and interested community members designated by the groups of intervention disorder. So thank you all for coming today also. The only action that we have on the agenda is an approval of a study session that was back on February 9th, so I move approval of that study session. And a motion saying for approval, those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes, there's no other action by the committee, the council during this study session. So we'll go ahead and start by hearing from Dr. Ginger, who has a presentation, and then we'll hear from our city attorney, and then we'll have an opportunity to have some discussion and ask some questions. Dr. Ginger, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is basically the same presentation I gave to federal court a couple of weeks ago with some additional information that I brought my people. So in effect, you're getting the same information that the judge got, at least from me. I don't know what's on the agenda after me. I know at federal court, other folks followed me with information that will not be done, I think, this time. But you're basically getting some information from me that Judge Brack got. This is just a quick review. I think everybody knows this. I'm not going to read it to you. It's the nine major areas of performance that the auditor's report addresses or addressed. And I guess it's still contained because it's in electronic form on the web, folks can get access to it. A list of the areas that we focused on in the second report. Each one of those was focused on specifically. Each paragraph related to those was addressed specifically. We covered the period June 1st to November 30th, and the overall compliance levels remain basically the same. Twenty-two out of 277, primary, if I de-tract and define the difference between primary, secondary, and operational. For you, you go down that list, the more in compliance you are. Primary basically says there's a policy that's been accepted and promulgated to APD that requires whatever is required of that paragraph. Secondary means that training has been delivered, and they're starting to assess people's operations in the field based on that part of that paragraph. And operational means that they're engaging in that activity on a day-to-day basis. So that's the holy grail of this process, is to be at least 95% in operational compliance so that that triggers the clock for two years of maintaining those. Critical pressure points. I've noticed I've got the word "policy" up there three times. We're still having issues with policy. And I know APD is aware of it. They're doing, they're taking steps to try to ameliorate this backlog of policies and try to get better policies through to the moniker and the parties. Without policy, they can't do training. You're probably familiar with the use-of-force training that was just kicked off. There was this horrible pause waiting to see if we were going to have a use-of-force policy, so training was started. And we made it by days, so we were able to get training off the ground. But the rule of practice is you can't start training, basically can't start training without approved policy. And that sort of cascades down, well, this is the things that I'm talking about here. You can't start supervising unless you've developed a policy and have started or effectively trained the policy. So each one of these things in this list is dependent on the things before it, so that you see you've got a pretty long road to hoe here to get to the point where we're in operational compliance. So after supervision comes kind of a negative term. There is positive and negative discipline. We're not talking about days off and weekends off. So after we've got the policy done, we have the training developed and delivered, supervisors can start monitoring activities in the field and taking appropriate action for all reprimands or whatever the case might warrant to ensure that the policy is actually being adhered to in the field. The last two are self-assessment processes and community outreach. We attended a CPC meeting, council CPC meeting last night and found it to be about where we expected to be. There's a lot of work to be done. They're brand new. They're sort of getting their feet on the ground about what it is they're supposed to do and how they're supposed to provide feedback and that sort of thing. And then the first point there is that strong self-assessment skills, the ability to look, the APD's ability to look at itself independently and compare itself to what other folks are doing in the field, that sort of thing, and think critically about its processes. We're still working on policies, and that's why the three, the three policy, policy, policy were really, if you look at what proceeded, you can't do much at all in terms of performing, complying, responding to the requirements of this settlement agreement until we get the policy done. And we're finding, as in the first report, we're finding some serious deficiencies in the policy development process at APD. It's worrisome. And PD has taken, PD and the city have taken several steps over the past several months to try to improve this process, and we're yet to see it in the actual product that's being delivered. So we're still having, and we'll talk about this a little bit more later, we're still having some substantial difficulties getting what I would refer to as operational policy through the process. We've really, at this point, we've really only improved one policy suite and a couple of other related policies. Most of that work was done, the use-of-force work was done face-to-face in a conference room with the U.S. Attorney's Office for the most part, going through the proper policy aligned at a time, literally aligned at a time. That's concerning for a couple of reasons. One, it's not a legitimate policy. And two, it reflects that inability, as of this point, of APD to independently move its policy in the process. We've taken steps to try to address this by referring APD to model policies that exist throughout the law enforcement field in the country. We've referred them to the California Police Officer Standards of Training, organization that has for virtually any police practice, has both a model policy and a training curriculum, a model training curriculum. And those are available on the Internet at no cost. You just take the search. I handed one out last week to the lieutenant writing the civil disturbances policy. It took five minutes to find it on the Internet, five minutes to turn it out. It's a certified standardized training curriculum developed by the State of California for civil disturbances. And it includes not just the policy, but a model training program. And we've encouraged APD to reach out similarly on all of their other policies. We provided a lead to Metro DCPD, which in my opinion has the finest policies in the country for responding to civil disturbances. And they only do about 30 a week, which they're going to catch on sooner or later. But we referred them there. We did not give them the policy, but APD followed up on that immediately, had a conversation with the chief. It's 130 pages long, simple space, and those guys do good work there. They're thorough. And the process is you don't just white out Metro DCPD. You go through there and find what works here and the stuff that doesn't work, you chuck it out and replace it with something that you think will. So it's not like a magic bullet that you just have to pull that off the Internet or ask Metro DCPD or whoever sent it to you and you've got your policy. It has to be internalized into the agency. But nonetheless, those sources are out there. The monitoring team is doing what it can do within its resources, time and energy to get APD pointed in the right direction. Right now, it's our most critical need. If we can't get this right, we're in trouble. So that's about all we're focusing on right now. And I mentioned today, we've gotten, we've got, since then, since we've got this use-of-force piece out, some other policies have come through. I'm not trying to say this is it, but this was the major piece. It's the one success that APD has that we can point to and say, look, we're moving this thing along. I'm not comfortable with the way it happened. It required too much technical assistance and guidance. This should be a process of a second nature to PD, and we'll talk a little bit later about some steps that I learned about today that they can try to address this issue. I'll talk a little bit about the compliance chain. I kind of mentioned that it folds all of those things into one process that needs to be integrated. They need the policy, the training, the supervision, and then when the fine folks that can't respond to that, they need to be retrained and disciplined. And then policies need to be put on a routine refresh list, which has already been created by APD. And their policies, their critical policies are on six-month reviews, which is accelerated earlier than most agencies in the country. Most agencies look at their high-risk critical tasks annually, and then when tasks get less critical, they review them less frequently. So APD is on a six-month instead of an annual review, and I think is a good thing. It also, the compliance chain requires periodic assessments of compliance efforts so that we don't try something that doesn't work and we just keep trying. They try something that doesn't work, they revise their development process or their training process or whatever it is that needs to change, and they assess that, they try that to see how it went. And that is something that has been established, but it's been established at such a recent date, obviously, because we haven't gotten policies, a lot of policies through yet. None have been around for six months, so that's something I have to evaluate later. The second bullet here is critical, that's routinization of compliance. That means it's something they do on the, just the normal day-to-day course of business. And obviously, we've not seen that yet because we're still in the development phase. So policy still remains a rough spot in this entire process. And we're spending huge amounts of time right now trying to assist APD with that process. It's probably two-thirds of my workload right now, just reviewing policies, commenting on policies and sending them back. It remains a rough spot, and until we're out of that rough spot, we're not going to go very far in terms of compliance. Any questions up to this point about where we stand? Because I'm going to sort of digress a little bit, maybe explain why we're in the trouble we're in, but if there are any questions that you'd like me to respond to?
Dr. Ginger, I think this would probably be a good time to stop and have some discussion, and I would like the city attorney to address, because I think the heart of what we're talking about is policy development. It seems like most of your presentation has to do with some of the other components that... So it could probably be good, since I think mostly the discussion would involve around policy development, let's have our city attorney respond to some updates that you guys have discussed, and then we'll have some discussion regarding that. And my understanding is that you need to leave by 1:00.
I can push on through if we need to.
Okay, we didn't get started about 20 after, and so I just want to make sure that in this meeting that we do have plenty of time for, you know, I think the primary purpose is to have a discussion with you on this, so.
I won't call it short, I'll stay here if you will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davis.
Mr. President, thank you. Well, we have certainly, APD has heard the concern about policy development. We understand from the monitoring team that that is the most critical concern right now. And so since the last monitoring report came out and since the last city council meeting, APD has really been looking hard at how to answer the questions that have been raised. Are the right people working on policy development? Do we need outside expertise? Those were a couple of the comments that were very directly raised by the council at their last meeting and also echo the concerns that have been in the monitor's report. So that's what APD's been looking at very, very hard for the last several weeks, and there have been, I think, three key things that have happened that I'll outline very quickly so that the counselors are aware of them. One is that I think there has been some clarification between APD and the monitoring team and DOJ about the use of model policies. During the negotiations, it was APD's understanding back in 2014 that they were not supposed to look at other policies, but were supposed to track their own. And so that has now been clarified, and it's been made very clear now to APD that they should look at other policies. So now they feel more free to do that, and we have started to do that. So I think that's a huge, a huge step. The second thing that has happened is that we've brought out, I'm sorry, brought in an outside consultant, because that was the, that was a big question, are the right people in the rooms? And Counsel Davis, I think you said, you know, someone could be an excellent police officer, but they might not be trained to write policies, and that's okay. So what we did is bring in someone on contract who can take the lead for us in this policy writing process, because as you've seen, the parties have come together to put together a schedule that has all the policies that need to be put in place by the end of May. And that's an important deadline in the settlement agreement that we want to keep. And so we want someone who can help us over the next few months to really get these policies where they need to be. So we've finalized the contract with former federal judge Lorenzo Garcia, very, very respected jurist in New Mexico. He has been a judge for more than 30 years, first as a state court judge, then for 28 years on the federal bench. He is very well-respected. In the past, he has served as constitutional counsel to the City of Albuquerque. He's served as special counsel to the New Mexico House of Representatives. He's been recognized by the National Hispanic Bar Association for his commitment to the preservation of civil and constitutional rights for all Americans. He was honored by the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Education Fund with his justice award. He has received more awards than I could probably mention in this short time that we have, but during his time as a federal judge would have had many, many, many cases that deal with constitutional issues, policing issues, use of force, all of those issues that we are facing. And so we brought him on board, and he is going to be the one that is looking at all of these policies that are going through this process with the monitoring team and the Department of Justice over the next several months. He's already looked at about eight of them, and we've started to receive feedback back from him. And one of the directives that APD has given him is look at what other departments are doing. Look at what national best practices are and what national standards are. Look at what APD has done in the past and how it needs to be added to. Don't just take the current policy and try to make it look better, but actually reach out, look at other departments and see what could be added to really make this the policy that will best serve APD and the community going forward. So he has already started that work, and we are at such an early stage in this schedule that lays out the next three months' worth of policy development that I think all but, there are two policies on this list that are currently with the monitor to have final resolution, on-body recording devices and promotional process. Those are the only two on this list that Dr. Garcia, I'm sorry, that Judge Garcia will not have been directly involved in. All of the others on the list of 32, so 30 of the 32, he will have a hand in, whether it's on the very front end before we resubmit it to the parties or looking at the feedback we've received from the parties and helping APD rewrite its policies to address those concerns. So we're, APD is very, very excited to have Judge Garcia on board. I think that he will be a tremendous addition to the team and will really, really help the department get these policies where they need to be. So that's the other major, major thing that has happened in the last few weeks to address the concerns, and that will help us get where we need to be by June. The third thing that has happened in the last few weeks is that we've looked long-term. What do we need to do to not only make sure we have good policies by June for this initial deadline, but APD plans to review those again every six and then every 12 months to have an ongoing system of improvement for these policies? And so APD has decided to implement an Office of Policy Analysis, which will be a group of people that is very specifically charged with the task of overseeing and unifying the policy development process that up until now has had a lot of good components, but no one really overseeing it to make sure that all the components are coming together in the right way. So that Office of Policy Analysis will be responsible for taking feedback from what's happened over the last, you know, once a policy's in place and time passes, take the last six to 12 months of experience with that policy, feedback from the community trends in civilian interactions between police and the community members, lawsuits, national trends, take all of that data and look at the policy and decide again, how does this need to improve to continue better serving the community? And that Office of Policy Analysis will be involved throughout the policy development process, and the parts we talked about in the council meeting will still be there with the SOP Review Committee and the Policies and Procedures Review Board, but now they'll be acting based on the specific guidance that this Office of Policy Analysis has come up with. If there's a national trend that says a policy should move in a particular direction, that will be clear as the direction as those groups review a policy, and they'll be able to be involved throughout, and they'll have representation on those groups. That way, they can make sure that things are staying on track. Once it gets to the end of the process, they will look at it again to make sure that the end result looks the way that it was supposed to before it started through the process. And we have some handouts for you. If they're helpful, we did one that sort of shows a brief visual overview of this, and we also have a more detailed chart that we'd be glad to provide you if that's helpful to you. But I wanted to make sure I gave you a quick overview of those three big things, realizing we will now really be drawing on national standards and best practices, bringing on a very, very respected former federal judge to help us write these policies, and then implementing a new group within the department that will long-term really be destabilizing force in policy development, review and constant improvement.
Dr. Ginger, you, some of the counselors have some questions for us, Davis and Counsel Gibson, but just a few things. Your comments, would you say your comments, and you're giving a summary and report that was given for the time period, June to November, ended November, you did mention some comments that you said, you know, serious deficiencies and worrisome. Would you say those comments characterize your, the report, which is through November 4th, strictly through November 4th, and you might have some different, you know, characterizations of it, you know, now, it's been three months, three to 12 months since then? Or would you say that the comments you made about policy and development being worrisome and serious deficiencies and still some rough spots, would you say that it's the same as it was on November 4th?
I think those are still applicable. Applicable. We'll get it out in a second.
And when you, so when we received the report, this council received the report just like just when everybody else does, you know, this might, I wanted to ask, do you, your comments in your report, the summaries, would you say they're a surprise to the, are they, is that the first time that administration, say, Ms. Hernandez and others are hearing about some of those things, you know, from your summary from November 4th, the report from November 4th, and now, you know, been a few weeks ago? I mean, would you say that the conclusions and your perspective and characterization, was it ongoing conversation from November 4th through that time, or was that something that was, you know, new to the court, new to us, new to the administration?
Well, it's an excellent question. It gives me a chance to explain a little bit about the monitoring process and how we manage it. Every time we do a site visit, we end the site visit process with an exit interview with the mayor and an exit interview with APD. Part of the reason for that is we prefer folks not be surprised when the report comes out, but you have to understand, Ken, that's at the end of the site visit, and then we go away for two months and we crunch numbers and come to conclusions. So those may not always be reflective of exactly what goes into the report, but they're certainly indicative of what we are concerned about.
Sure. And we, you know, we receive those reports, and certainly when we hear, as a counselor, you know, when we read those reports and we hear some concerns that you have, I mean, then, you know, we want to come alongside you and say, you know, ask them those questions, are the right people in the right place? Are we addressing with the kind of urgency and, you know, the kind of seriousness that you characterize it as? So those are some of the comments and some of the discussion we had, you know, last Monday night. And so, and is the, is the administration... And so, is the administration responsive? We're not policy writers. If they could be the policy writers, then we would feel more accountable to that, but since we're not writing the policies, you know, we feel responsibility to hold, you know, somewhat accountable to that.
Well, and if I could just respond to that briefly, I'll be the first guy to confess that policy writing isn't easy.
Sure.
You know, I've written two of these things over the years and they were both difficult. I've reviewed hundreds and you very seldom read a policy manual. You don't have some pretty serious disaffirmative. They're difficult to write, they're difficult to keep updated because laws and opinions change in the courts almost on a daily basis. So it's not a routine undertaking by any stretch of the imagination. It's not, it's not easy. So I'm not surprised to see some issues here. In fact, I would have been surprised by 10.
Would you briefly just describe how you see the council, this city council of Albuquerque, our role just in this process?
Well, I hate to say this, but you're responsible. I mean, you're the oversight body.
Let me clarify that thing.
APD. You have the floor.
I'm also not writing the policies.
Right.
I'm not the guy that's writing these policies. I'm not, you know, you're not holding me accountable personally.
Not personally, no.
Yeah.
But as an oversight board, you know...
I'm not speaking for the judge and talking to the DOJ and everybody else. So, I mean, if you could help clarify how you see the policy, I mean, really, the city of Albuquerque, the legislative body in the city of Albuquerque, nine city councilors, what is the role?
Well, I think, you know, the oversight role is critical here and, you know, I appreciate the ability to come before council and give you our assessment of where we are and where we need to be. And I think you need that information as a body to exercise your authority to get APD to move along in the right direction. And I think some of the things that we heard about today are definitely the right direction. And it's things that we've not encountered before. There are things we've not encountered before or heard about before. So, you know, I compliment APD on taking those steps and that one with Judge Garcia is a significant step, I think. I think it's going to, it should clear up some real issues. And so the, I know the council is concerned about sometimes the only time you hear from folks is when they want money. And that's part of the reason that I'm glad I can be here to talk you through this, if you so desire, about what best practices are and where we see this thing needing to go. And that should be what's in the monitor report, should identify areas of weakness and what needs to be addressed.
Counselor Diggs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ginger, thank you. You know, since this initial report came out and I think President Lewis is right to point out that sort of the analysis here is through November, at least. And, but quite frankly, since then even in the exit, thanks for inviting someone to our meeting, in the exit interview last week, I think that was the most informative piece that I've had the opportunity to see yet, with APD, your office, the city attorney's office, the mayor, some of us involved in actually walking through some of your concerns and also laying out. Quite frankly, there are some places that things are a lot better in looking at special operations and SWAT, for instance, and their use of, their ability to adapt quickly and integrate CI teamwork in there have dramatically reduced the incidents and caused injury and fatalities. And I think those are all positive and right to draw those out. I think what we ask, as the city attorney said, I think what we ask is, is there something big that needs to be done quickly to be sure we're back or in the place we need to be? And in my conversations, I think the answer is, we think this new idea of bringing Judge Garcia and the new policy review office seems to be that. So as a way of, two questions quickly. I realize that we're integrating this, as Ms. Hernandez mentions, there are 32 policies or so filed into court that need to be approved ultimately by the end of May. The deadline for APD to submit 22 of those has already passed. Can you help us understand since November, how, if those, sorry, Ms. Hernandez, you don't clear, is the city far enough along in that process that we're complying with that? And I know your office is now under deadline to have at least provided comment on at least 13 of those. So are we on track for the remaining policies to continue and get us to the place we need to be at the end of May, 1st of June, at the end of this next reporting period?
Definitely not. Absolutely not.
How many, do you know, or Ms. Hernandez, how many of those policies that should have been filed by the 11th of last week, been filed and how many has your office been able to return comment on according to the schedule we put to the court?
With the exception of the very last piece of the internal affairs policy, we've, the monitoring team has met its responsibilities and has had the...
Okay.
I was at the CPC meeting until late last night and so that last piece of the IA response will come in later today.
And that's, for the folks watching, that's the last of the policies that your office is, is under the court's scheduling, that your office is going to provide comment to already. So that's sort of on track, at least according to the court's schedule, right? We're not behind.
Right.
We're not behind in that.
Each, if I could, Mr. President and Counselor Davis, each of the deadlines that the parties established in this schedule have been, the city has sent the policies on time, the parties and the monitor have responded on time. And for those that it applies to, the city has sent a new version back based on the feedback. So all of these deadlines have been met by everyone involved and the policies that, the next deadline is by March 22nd, that the city will send six policies back to the parties with changes based on the feedback. And Judge Garcia will have been able to be involved in that process. And so in that sense, we, APD does believe that it's on track because these policies are being sent and the feedback that we've received from the monitor and the parties, APD is incorporating that with Judge Garcia's help. And so all of these revised versions will be sent back to the parties at the time that they're intended to. And it's just a matter of how much revision happens in the process. But extensive revision does not mean that we are not on track because that's the purpose of these deadlines.
Thank you. And so I think one of the questions we asked at the council that several of us asked about was whether we have the right people in the room and whether we, the department in the process needs outside help. And that was in part about upfront, but also we heard some concern from the MRAC folks, which is, for folks at home, the Mental Health Response Advisory Committee that we talked about, the Police Oversight Board, they expressed some concern about the time they had to come in and provide that back as this new organization is operating. Dr. Ginger, the new sort of process for policy development that has these feedback loops for early, mid and late and then feedback again, do you think, in your experience, that that's a process that resolves your concerns about the way the department was able to incorporate and receive and feedback? Is this, is that the right answer here before we go to a whole nother report period and realize that we might not have it yet?
I don't think it's the right answer, given the response that we're getting from the city at this time on existing policies that are due for review and comment. Quite frankly, on one of the last policies I reviewed, I got through four pages and just simply sent it back for a rewrite. It was that problematic. Now, on the flip side of that, I have reviewed at least one policy that I told the city it's not bad. You know, it's not there yet, but we're getting close. So there's a very wide spectrum of performance in this process. Between the Justice Department and the monitoring team, we're making as many as 70 or 80 requests for change on a given policy. That's problematic, to say the least. The process that we now have before us may, probably will, given the person that's been selected, reduce that drastically.
Okay.
But, you know, what's happening right now is just not working.
So the process they're proposing at least here seems to be moving in the right direction and you hope will be helpful?
I would say so. We've worked with the city for quite some time about adding technical writing assistance to this process. We just finished, literally just finished, how to write policy workshop with APD command staff and other folks from CPOA and POV and the alphabet soup.
Yep.
So, you know, that, there's a large amount of technical assistance that's being poured into this and with the addition of Judge Garcia, that certainly should have a meaningful effect.
And to follow this to close that out, and this will be my last, Ms. Hernandez, who's paying for Dr. or, excuse me, Judge Garcia's new contract as a new addition to this process?
I believe that will come out of APD's budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say, I think it's important, I think this is, and your question raises a good point. I wonder if this council ought to have a conversation about, and I know I've personally had conversations, that some of us had, about a process to more regularly get an update on this instead of every three months sort of being surprised with that update. I'd love for our council to have a conversation about how with staff and staff council, we can sort of work in our way into the interim processes to identify some of the issues or find ways we might resource additional help or whatever it is that helps us play a more proactive role and love for us to consider that as we come out of this. Thank you, sir.
Counselor Gibson.
Okay, I have three questions and a comment. Truly have utmost respect for Judge Garcia. You know, honored that he's willing to work with us, but has he ever written a police policy before?
Mr. President and Counselor Gibson, in talking with Judge Garcia, we talked a lot about how he has reviewed police policies in all of the constitutional cases that he's handled involving policing. He was one of the judges that is, that was responsible for hearing those cases over the last three decades, who would have been looking at when someone brings a lawsuit against a police department, one of the central issues is training and policy. And so he was responsible for seeing how those policies applied to those situations and how they get into that interaction, that litigation, how it impacted liability to the city. And so he's had decades of experience in seeing practical impact. He is not a police department policy writer by trade. He's an attorney and a judge. But we believe that he was someone who brought together, and also as a judge, he's an excellent writer, maybe not of policy specifically, but especially in federal court, they write lengthy opinions to describe and outline and justify their decisions and to write very complex concepts into a clear format that the parties and their lawyers can understand.
Okay. So, and same question to you, Dr. Ginger, do you think that this will be an asset in writing that Judge Garcia will be able to serve in as an effective asset? Okay?
Well, I think, I think it's entirely probable that he will. You know, I've seen work from federal judges before and it's quite, usually quite impressive. I agree that he's, by training, training and trade, he is not a policy writer. But at this stage of the game, I'm willing to try anything that's going to lead this process along because this is a major issue. If we don't get this resolved, it's going to start cutting into the time that APD has to train, supervise, discipline and get this process under control.
Yeah, I hear that message loud and clear. I'm not, though. I don't, I disagree with you. I'm not ready to try anything just to get us moving. I want us to try the right thing. And for us to start with old policy, old SOBs and expound on that, I think is, that's probably the first fatal flaw that the department has been, has been using. I mean, I've heard Dr. Ginger in the past suggest already-written procedures that other departments have developed, I think it was, I don't remember what meeting it was, but it was right over here in the conference room. It only makes sense not to reinvent the wheel and I've heard that, I've heard you say that time and time again, to use what is out there and modify it to fit our department. You know, we're talking about weeks here. We're not talking about months. You know, months, May is a few months away, but there is a lot to be really distributed, reviewed, get, take those reviews back and, you know, judge them, whether they're appropriate or not for these SOBs. All of that's going to take a very long time. I appreciate this chart, this really helps. I'm a very visual learner, but so right here on the chart, pre-settlement APD policy approval process, very first thing is existing standard operating procedure. That's, that's our fatal flaw. Mentioned that before. Then we come up with a...
Counselor, if I could, that was before the settlement, just so you know. That shows the old system.
Oh, oh, good.
And I'm so sorry to interrupt, I just wanted to clarify.
Good. So where's the one I should look at? Oh, post settlement.
The bottom, the bottom third of the page is what shows our new process. So the top shows what was done years ago, before the settlement agreement was entered into. The middle shows what was done after the settlement agreement that the monitoring team expressed concern with. And so the bottom of the page shows what has been changed in the last several weeks to address the concerns.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I think I'm relieved. But it's still, it's a revised SOP that proposed changes out of the Office of Policy Analysis. Here's what I'm afraid of, let me shortcut this, is that we're adding another layer of, another hierarchy of, to the process that is not going to churn out a policy and attached procedure. That's what my fear is. I hope I'm wrong, because I don't think they're going to do it the way I thought they'd do it. Should be looking at here, it's just a little, yes, those guys over there. So I hope I'm wrong, but it does, it certainly doesn't make any sense to start with something that's flawed and try to fix it. Start with something that's right and go from there. So, I see, yeah. Oh, and I do have one question real quick. Which CPC meeting did you attend last night?
The Valley area and southeast. They were two together.
All right. And you think we still have some work to do?
Oh, absolutely. And I think, I think the contract, and again, I'm not familiar with the terms of the contract that went into the state agreement, but I think that process will go a long way toward firming up those CPCs and getting them functioning the way they need to be functioning, based on the national model, model for that sort of thing.
Okay. So one last thing and then I'm really done. In the review process, let's go back to SOBs, the review process and the policy, SOPs, are they going to be going out to all of these different groups at the same time? CPOA, APOA, MRAC, you know, the rest of the groups? Are they going to go out all at the same time?
Just that. President Lewis and Counselor Gibson, if you look at the bottom portion of the chart that you have, this shows you that it starts with the Office of Policy Analysis and they're not just taking old policy and looking at changes to make to that old policy, they really are reaching out and looking at other departments to see what does a good policy, what is a strong policy on this topic look like? And then they will put out a version of the standard, the new standard operating procedure with changes that they want made to it. And then it would start to go through these processes. The places in here where you have input from, for example, the Civilian Police Oversight Agency or the Police Oversight Board are two different places. The yellow box that's fourth, where it goes out on power DMS for 15 days, that's a time when all of the employees in APD can comment. So over 1,000 people get the chance to look at it. And then also during that timeframe, it goes to the CPOA and the POV, and they could give input at that point as well. Then if you look two steps down the process at the Policy and Procedures Review Board, MRAC and Police Oversight Board and Civilian Police Oversight Agency would be involved in that stage as well. So there are two different parts of the process where those groups would be giving input. And then another really significant part of this, and this is the part that I think will make this very strong over time, is that if you see at the end where you have the green ovals that are your final policy and then you have those loops that loop back to the very beginning, Office of Policy Analysis, and what they're looking at over those six or 12-month reviews, litigation trends, officer injury trends, department observations, whether they're good or bad, and also national trend data. And they would take all of that information and then there, if you'll see on the... And they would take all of that information and then there, if you'll see on the, on the right hand, we've given a, a summary of what these different groups would do. And the, toward the bottom of the Office of Policy Analysis's summary, it says the group will receive input from representatives from the CPOA, POB, and local groups interested in policy development, review, and analysis in a monthly forum. So there would actually be a time when any of the groups that have expressed interest in these reform efforts could come and meet with the Office of Policy Analysis and give input that they want them to take into account for that next review period. So it's an ongoing, evolving process of constantly gathering information from both national trends and our own unique community of what changes need to be made to continue improving this policy over time so that we don't end up in a situation where 10 years have gone by and no one's looked at a policy again. That won't happen in Albuquerque anymore because of this new process APD is putting in place.
Okay. So how long will it take to get a policy through this?
It will depend on the complexity of the policy and the, I think that specific timelines, Mr. Lawson could probably answer those very specifically if you'd like him to.
Okay. Well, let me just make my point. This is mid-March. We have until May. We have many, many policies to get through because we need training time, you know, in order to comply with the settlement agreement because we need two years of perfect attendance, compliance. And that's why, so, you know, we're, we're looking at weeks, we're not looking at months.
And I'm, I'm glad you raised that because that's a really important distinction. The policies that are on this list that we're working on between now and June, those have already gone through much of this process, they've gone through this process. What we're at, this whole process, including that feedback loop, is the long-term fix for future policy development. We're not starting these policies from scratch at the beginning of this because they've already gone through this policy development process. The only thing that didn't exist before was the Office of Policy Analysis. So that part's new and that's to make sure that on an ongoing basis, these policies are strong. These policies here, that's the reason that we've brought in Judge Garcia. You know, those policies have made their way through this process already. He's coming in to make sure that in the time that we have between now and June, that these get where they need to be. He is acting as the Office of Policy Analysis between now and June essentially. And then long-term, that office will be more fully developed and-
So those have been through APOAs, BOAs?
Yes.
They have?
Yes.
Been commented, commented on, MRAC?
These have gone out through Power DMS and gone through the Policy and Procedure Review Board where the police oversight team participate.
And we've got comments back there?
Yes. Yes, we have.
Mr. President? Just a little, Counsel Gibson?
Yes, I've finished.
Okay. Counselor Woodruff?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Dr. Ginger, it, it just seems like there's been some major differences between your team and APD and maybe the DOJ on policy formation. So I, I mean, my perception is that, that we have a communication issue. So I'm, I'm just curious to ask you, could the communication between APD, your department, even DOJ be better? It seems like when the policy discussion started, you know, the communication said, this is, this is what we're looking for in a policy. And I'm not sure if that was done, but it, it just seems maybe there's some lack of communication between these three entities. Am I correct or not?
Well, I think you can always improve communication. It's never a bad thing. But, you know, we, we're working on the same platform that we started with, that, you know, the, the policy has to be, has to address national standards of practice. It has to address recent case law. It has to address New Mexico statute. And that's what, that's the same thing we came in on a year and a couple of months ago. You know, that, when we made our presentation to the selection group to determine who the monitoring, monitor, monitoring team was going to be, that's, that's what we articulated. It was articulated in our methodology that was published shortly thereafter. It's been communicated to the city often and not loudly, but at least often. So that, that hasn't changed. What, what has changed is we've gotten a much more compressed schedule of necessity because the city's trying to meet deadlines. And every day we don't get things completed, there's more stuff pushed back into the hopper that has to be dealt with on a sharp turnaround. And, you know, we're, we're confronting that now. I mean, we've, things that should have been done a year ago haven't been done and we're trying to get to that now.
Dr. Ginger, one more question. Are you, as your monitoring team, communicating daily with, with APDs and these issues?
Almost daily. I wouldn't say daily. We probably take Saturdays and Sundays off sometimes, but it, it's not, I don't think it's a communication issue. I may hear differently from the city. I think, I think it's just, this is a complex process. It's not easy. And if it were easy, we'd be out of it by now. So what, what we're trying to do here is some of the most complex stuff in, in, in my field anyway. And I think it's reflected in the quality of the product that we're getting right now. And that's why I think Judge Garcia is a really appropriate and needed resource. And I'm hoping it's going to have the desired effect. The issue still remains we're on very tight timelines. And these timelines would work fine if we were getting acceptable policy first draft or nearly acceptable policy first draft. But what we're getting are policies that, I don't give up easily, but after, after 70-some line comments on a, on a given policy in three or four pages, it's time to send it back to the drawing room. And that's, that's what we're running into. And I don't think it's APD trying to be difficult. I think it's APD being, every time we move that back, it has to be acted on again. So their, their plate is getting very, very full. The monitor's plate is very full right now, just reviewing policies. You know, I missed one of my self-imposed deadlines last night because I was at a CPC meeting. So that's, that tells you how tight things are getting. And I think, honestly, I think that's the issue. I don't think it's a question of will or desire or in some cases, ability. I think it's, we've compressed this down to the point where it's almost untenable right now. And if Judge Garcia can help with that, that's great.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
So I guess I would say, are there, are there resources that you all need? Because I'm, I'm looking at it like this, when, when you give a report like this, you know, Dr. Ginger, we're going to, we're going to take it seriously as a council and our, what we're going to do is we're going to hold our administration accountable to it. You know, we're going to say, what do we need to be able to change this and get this on, on the right track? This is also the same council that requested this investigation in the first place. I mean, this is the council that publicly said this would be the right time to have, you know, a DOJ investigation. And this is also the council that funded millions of dollars to be able to help you, you know, help, help this process to be funded and to do this, this process. And also, the, the majority of the discussion regarding the problems with APD and the challenges that we're facing all happened in, in the council chambers for this. So, and maybe just something to think about, I mean, we're going to make sure that we're holding everybody in the administration accountable to making these changes. We're going to take what you say seriously. I guess I would also, you know, hope that if there are, you know, I want to know if we haven't given you the resources that we've given you that are necessary either because what we need from you is help also. I think the communication question, the working together question also has to do with, are we giving you enough resources so that you could truly be a help to help us through this process? And not just go through a court process of who's doing what, who's doing who, things like that, so.
I have a couple of questions.
I understand. So we're going to go to Counsel Sanchez and then Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ginger, I am very troubled and concerned by what I've heard. And it was a statement made by Mrs. Hernandez that, that one of the issues that came up is we were not allowed to look at other agencies across the country where there's models that have been success stories to implement some of these development changes. Is that the truth? That we could not look at other?
Honestly, Counselor, I don't know, and I wish I did. I think, I, I think I could probably explain to you how that might be a hypothesis and it's not been tested, so. But I, I know how conversations, I've been doing this work for a long time. And if you'd like to, to discuss that, I'd be happy to give you a quick three minutes on what I think probably happened.
I think it's important because, and I'm really troubled because I'm hearing that we were not allowed to look at other municipalities across the country that have success stories and a model that we could utilize. When it was stated we could get online and within five minutes we can get that information, and here we are, you're making statements a year down the road, we're not near where we need to be. I mean, that's very troubling for myself.
And I think, I think quite honestly, it was simply a miscommunication. Some words may not have been chosen wisely and some people may not have listened carefully. That, obviously, that, that direction didn't come from the monitoring team because we didn't want your APD to check those sources since day one. And I just checked with Justice again in a training piece that I did for policy development and got the approval to do that. So my, my guess is, early, early on, somebody asked a question and there was a quick response that wasn't artfully crafted. And that was taken by APD to mean, you know, we can't look at model policies. And, you know, if you, if you know the history of the model policy business, I can see where that would happen. But I think that in my, my hypothesis, hypothesis would be that's exactly what happened. And so APD, thinking they'd been told they could, when probably what was said was, you can't just do that, you got to do some other two, three, or four things, got off on that track. But that's been resolved. We now know that, that referral, I mean, to Calco's can be followed up. The Justice Department will not object to it. In fact, probably welcome it because it crafts better policy than that. So I think, I think that was simply a miscommunication way back in the early, early days, even before the settlement agreement was approved by the courts, while it was being developed.
And here we are, millions and millions of dollars later, dealing with the same problems that should have been done with, you know, over a year ago. And I think it's paramount, I know the mayor, the mayor said he was taking responsibility, the chief of it said he is taking responsibility. I think as a community, we all need to take responsibility for what happened. And I'm very pleased to see that we have Judge Garcia now on board. He's an expert in constitutional law and constitutional police, I think, is paramount in the reform process. But I want to thank Jessica also for, you know, working to bring Doctor, or Judge Garcia to make these changes. It's so important. But I mean, we are way behind the game and we need to really play some catch-up here. And time is not on our side because we've got some major deadlines that are coming up.
Right. And, and, you know, there's, there's, that's one of the reasons we're working this policy as hard as we are right now is because we're confident of the deadlines. And, and the last thing that's going to happen is the monitoring team is going to get in the way of timely, adequate performance. Now, I'll get in the way all day long with sub-adequate or inadequate performance. But if it's, if it's adequate performance, we're going to do what we need to do any bit long. And that, the council has my word on that. The city has my word on that. We don't work any other way. I went to bed last night at 3:00 AM. So, you know, we're, we're pretty committed to this stuff. And we're going to do anything we can do within the terms of what's required to be done to make sure that APD is successful.
Thank you. I also want to thank U.S. Attorney David Martinez and his team for also being here. I think it's important that they are involved in this process and that we as a community do what's right. It's important that our police department also has the resources and the tools. And one of the biggest prices that I think they are facing is a lack of manpower. And I know the, the study was done for a thousand officers. I truly believe that number still will. And we need, you know, probably 1100 or 1200 police officers. I'd like, and I've asked our staff, John Zaman, to look at the study that was done by the professional that was brought in stating that we needed at least 1,000 officers. In 2006, we had 996 sworn officers in the Albuquerque Police Department. Today, we have probably less than 800.
Right. Counsel Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ginger, thank you for being here. We do have several questions, and one of the most concerning, of course, realizing in your reinforcement, the city council is the ultimate responsible body on this. As a part of that ultimate responsible body, I would much appreciate far more frequent briefings, especially considering the fact that you are now office clerk and living in the city of Albuquerque. For me to get a report that is already three or four months behind what happened is absolutely useless. It's very difficult for us to help initiate change if we have already gone past the time when the change should have been addressed and looked at. So I would respectfully request that be at a, I have no problem with a verbal briefing. But I believe that it's very important that we get briefings, the very minimal on a monthly basis, at what is happening right then and what has happened to that. I think for us to try to come back in and be responsible for fixing something that is already gone wrong, broken, and trying to be fixed again is ludicrous. It doesn't work. So that would be my request.
Well, I have no, I have no opposition to that, Counselor. And as you know, the, the reporting process is set by the court. So it's, that is out of our hands. It has to go when it has to go. But if, if council needs interim briefings, I will support it.
Thank you, Dr. Ginger. And one more question. You said on one of the reports that you got, one of, there were, you made 70-some comments-
Between Justice and my team, yes.
Okay. So tell me, what are the comments? Are the comments constructive? Are they, this doesn't work? Are they, what kind of comments are they? Are they comments that are actually useful to write the policies and procedures correctly? Or are they just?
Part of the presentation that's coming up will address that, but I can address it now.
Thank you.
They are all substantive. I know that council's been given information that, that the monitoring team is trying to teach an English class. I can recall in all of the policies that I've looked at noting one spacing problem and lack of some periods. That's the only editing that I've done. Everything else has been substantive. For example, I'm confused. You're writing a policy that outlines the duties of Assistant Chief, Deputy Chief, Majors, and Commanders, but the policy only addresses commanders. That, that's kind of substantive. You know, the, the comment on that one and a half-page civil disturbance policy that we got, policy and procedure that we got was, where's the mention of the First Amendment and the right to peaceably assemble? That's pretty substantive stuff. So if anyone who's giving you information that suggests we're editing and only concerned about style is giving you false information, our comments are related to content, 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 and understandability and trainability. So, you know, I understand there's some information out there that we're trying to play college professor or whatever, but I have lists of the number of comments on policies and the types, the verbatim quotes from what we said in our, our edits, if, if we have time to get to it.
Thank you, Dr. Ginger. And this is my last question. And, and I have never been told that you did that. But as someone who is actually, can't control myself on editing with grammar, and I get it, but I've never been told that that's what you do. I was just curious, what are the comments? Do they go back saying, no, 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 no?
Oh, absolutely not.
Or do they give a suggestion on what is lacking?
Well, they give suggestions to the points of providing model policy and context.
That's my question.
That's how in-depth it is. And I, my guys have been instructed that the grammar is up, up to you, it's not up to us.
Thank you.
And some of us, you know, ex-college professors sometimes append stutters. But we try to avoid that at all costs because, you know, APD's time is valuable, our time is valuable. Why waste it on punctuating something that's going to be changed anyway?
Thank you. Sometimes it's in control. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Bennett.
Can we remember the presentation and then maybe it, I, I would, I did have a question, but I sort of feel like we ought to hear the remainder of the presentation.
Well, if we can't get to it here, I'll put it in my next report, or if you'd like, I'll put it in an interim report.
You mean the presentation?
The presentation, yeah.
Well, in that case, I'll go ahead and-
I want counsel to hear it. I think it's important. I think it will, it may not clear the air, but it'll certainly generate some light.
So have you, Counsel Bennett, and then Counsel Bennett?
Okay. So quickly, when I attended the exit, the recent exit interview, I got the sense, I think the, I think the quote was- think the quote was, there was a good volume of work done by APD, but it wasn't the right work. And that really worries me, that that, you know, that implies kind of a spinning of wheels, and that there's a lot of flurry and panic to meet deadlines and so forth, that we're not getting quality yet. I wanted to ask about that.
Well, that is certainly true. That is certainly the case. For us to return that number of policies, I mean, the success rate is basically zero. And that shouldn't concern anyone. You know, if you're a professional baseball player and your batting average is zero, you're not a professional baseball player.
Right.
And that's pretty much where we are right now. That policy suite that we got out, we got out with massive intervention. The policies that have been approved since then are important policies, but they're relatively, you can say minor, they're relatively tangentially related to the real issues that we're going to be dealing with. So I am anything but pleased about where we are right now. I'm concerned, and, you know, worse than that, probably, truth be known. So I think, this is so critical. Without this, we don't go anywhere. So until we get meaningful policy, we can't train. And until you train, you can't hold people accountable, and the whole process is lost. And the other thing to consider is that we're on an artificially accelerated timeline here. These things routinely run seven, eight, nine years, and we're on a four-year timeline. So, and that's part of the pressure that you're hearing from the city and from the monitor.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, you know, I, I've yet to understand, you know, who's the project manager of this project? You know, my wife's a project manager. She should be on that all day long, what's the process by which we're going to manage the process, and who is really truly in charge. And we've asked questions about that. And of course, Ms. Hernandez, in some ways, is the point person, and I'm sure the command staff, you know, that's a point person. But who's really the project manager on this, if you were to characterize them?
Well, I mean, if I were, if I were an outside analyst looking at that question, I would simply track emails. And I can tell you right now, my email ratio is a hundred to one, city attorney versus command staff. So that would give me an idea of who's running this.
And then, with regard to the policy development and the chart, the new approval process that Ms. Hernandez outlined, and the role of the civilian police oversight agency in that, that kind of goes back to a concern that I have. And as the president said, mostly people are just coming to us asking for money, and that includes the budget that's coming up, and the need to budget this correctly. And that is paragraph 174, assessing compliance with paragraph 198, CPOA staffing. And in your report, you did say that the team is concerned with the apparent lack of sufficient staffing, CPOA. We know they have a backlog. We're all reading about that in the news. They're trying to slog their way through a backlog. Meanwhile, when we gave them their charge, their charge was to also, very much, I mean, in a perfect world, which I don't know if they're ever going to get there, to spend half their time on policy. Well, that's a big concern. I wonder if you would address that.
Well, I, you know, the workload analysis is a relatively straightforward thing. You build an average over a period of time of the number of cases, the number of, you build an average of the number of average cases that can be averagely investigated, et cetera, et cetera. And that tells you how many people you need. That is not something that was, the monitoring team was tasked with. It's our responsibility to point it out as an issue. And probably the appropriate response is a manpower study, a workload study, and a response that says, you guys have X, you need Y. And that's the best way to answer that. Now, I'd like counsel to understand that we've been looking at their work product, compared pre-post to the new director coming on board, and there are some really shiny spots there, really shiny spots there. And it looks to us like they're whittling away at that backlog, backlog, which is incredibly important. If you don't do that, you spend all of your time working on old cases and none of your time working on current cases where you can make a difference. So I think things are getting, I don't think, I know, things are getting better there. They're more well-managed, they're paying more attention to their timelines, and they're in the harness, if you'll pardon the expression.
You had harness?
That was a good one, and I didn't even mean to do it. But they're in the harness, and they're pulling, they're pulling hard. So I think, I think we're less concerned about it now than we were when we first arrived. So I think, and I think that's important for counsel to know.
Well, that's good to hear, and I think we'll, we'll reach out to them and also talk to them about their resources, and whether they've got what they need. Thank you.
Counsel opinion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Dr. Ginger. It was me. I spoke to you the last time you were here for the exit interview, could you make it? But I just, you know, have a few comments that I want to make along the lines of Counsel Jones and a little bit of what Counsel Isaac Detton talked about. You know, I'm real glad that you, you know, when you answered the question, you were asked a question, you answered it, and you said who was ultimately responsible. You said the city council was. You know, it's just real interesting, going through this entire process, this and other projects that we have here at the city of Albuquerque, even though we're ultimately responsible, it felt along the lines that it's kind of like the tail wagging the dog, right? You know, so we're kind of always answering after the fact. It's just, it's just been a really interesting, a really interesting process, and I'm just glad to hear that, you know, there's been some progress made. I'm glad to hear that Judge Garcia's been hired to review the process, but it does sound like we still have some deficiencies in terms of writing, you know? So I hope that we look at that into the future, because I think it's important to move it along. And when you made the comment and said that, Counsel Jones made the comment, said that there were seventy-seven comments, I had the same question. Along those lines, a year's gone by, and during that process, and any of those comments, did you, did you ever think to say that, well, are you looking at other, other policies throughout this?
Oh, absolutely. That was our first recommendation to APD, because, I'm sorry, I immediately read, I apologize. That was our first recommendation. I've written two of these things, and that was absolutely the first thing I did, because I went out and found other places that had good policy, and that guided me on developing all this. And that was, if not the first suggestion to APD, when we were talking about policy, but certainly among the first. So that came from the monitoring team. We only recently found out that PD was under the impression that they had been told early on in the process they couldn't do that. And that's when we got it solved.
For me, it's just a little interesting, when I hear that near fatal flaws in terms of our policies, it seems like that would have been brought up more. So I hope that when you, if you continue to see this, that you bring it to the attention of counsel, or make those comments again. So, because it seems that there is, or maybe there has been some communication breakdown. I really like that we're doing this whole continuous improvement process with our policy. And then, Chief, this is directed at you, you know, I believe that we have tremendous police force, and I think they're out there trying to do the right thing for our community. I think that it's gone way too long for the morale of our police department and feeling that the community isn't supportive of them. I think the community, for the most part, is very supportive of our police department. And you stated at our council meeting that you hold yourself responsible for this. And I really think that it's up to you and to your command staff to really move this process along and show what we're really about here in the city of Albuquerque. We're, we're better than this, and I think our police officers that are on the ground deserve to know that. And I think that the community really needs to really feel like they're being supported by the police and vice versa, if you could just paramount. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Davis.
Let me think, Mr. President. Sort of circle back and wrap up. I mean, Chief, if I could just follow quickly, I heard Dr. Ginger say that, you know, the point really has been Ms. Hernandez's office on this, and in one way, I sort of understand this. This began as sort of litigation, and particularly when it comes to the policies, I understand that. But we also have to get to a place, now that we're doing training, where the department takes ownership of this and begins to sort of conceptualize and institutionalize what you've already outlined, that you see needs to be done. Can you tell us who in your office is the point person on this project? I know they're working directly with Ms. Hernandez now on the policy stuff, but at some point, that's going to have, that needle has to come back to APD at some point. Who is in your shop the point person, the project manager for this? Who's working with Judge Garcia to make this work going forward?
Mr. Chairman and Counselor Davis, it's actually three of us. It's myself, Bob Huntsman, and Bill Slosson. Three of us have been fully engaged in this process. It's the three of us that, again, it depends on which area it falls, but we meet sometimes two and three times a day on particular issues. Just an example that I can give you is today, we received feedback on some monitors' comments. We met on that information this morning, beginning at 7:30 this morning. Some information we received back from Dr. Ginger, I believe, on Tuesday. We were here until 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, working on the information that had been provided. Truly is a team effort, and as I stated in city council the other night, ultimately, I'm responsible.
Thanks for that. And I appreciate that. Thank you, Chief. And I want to, I want to say that it's frustrating that we all have been at this process and continuing to be, quite frankly, I think, since the exit, since really the first monitor report, two weeks ago, or so, in the House of Congress, or this last report, I think I've sat in on ten or twelve hours worth of meetings, three or four with that exit interview. I went to a couple hours' worth of the POV meetings with CPOA that night, and met with Mr. Hernandez the next day, to ask about some of the manpower and resource issues. I mean, I think there's just a lot of moving pieces here. But one thing that kept away, Dr. Ginger, from our meeting earlier this week, was you told me, you mentioned, and then I had a chance to follow the city attorney and look at this, you mentioned that you thought perhaps that the revised process with the Office of Policy Analysis and this closed feedback loop, that the way this had been designed could perhaps be the first and best thing you could point to other organizations down the future, and say, go back and look at Albuquerque about how they adapted and how they made a process work coming out of a bad piece. Is that right? I mean, is this, are we in a position where we can get this on track and meet our deadlines so that we don't miss June and create good policy loops from this? Is it still your opinion, sort of, that this is something?
Well, it's, what I said was, this will probably be, because we haven't seen it before.
That's right. I understand that, thanks.
So I guess I'll reiterate that. What you have in front of you is, if this had been my project, it's what I would have recommended. And I complimented Director Slosson on that, sorry, a couple of times, yesterday, I believe, if not the day before. It's the first piece of careful thought and development that I've actually seen in product. It's a great idea. Let's hope it works. And if it does, I think it's going to resolve a lot of the policy issues. You'll notice there's a built-in loop for community input, which something we didn't go in hammer and tong about, or on what. That's in there. Now, as a plan, it certainly offers, I think, success. But you know what they say about the best plan plans. So our job is to determine in the future if it works or not. And if it does, we'll be the first, well, we may not be the first ones to say so, but we will certainly say so. And I can, I can promise you that.
Do more regular updates, hopefully, so.
Yeah, let's hope so.
Excellent. Counsel Winter, we'll probably try to wrap things up here in just a nice few moments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Ginger, I appreciate you being here. I think that, I think the counsel really is giving an understanding that I think, and hopefully, that there's going to be a lot of changes from this point on. So I hope the next time you come see us, there's going to be some good news.
Us, too. It would be nice.
We advertised that we'd be here till 1:30, so we do want to be respectful of everyone's time. Thank you, Dr. Ginger, for coming and staying in extended time. To U.S. Attorney Damon Martinez, your staff, and everyone else, thank you, the public, for coming and being a part of this session with us. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Sure. Our staff, I think, is one really, a lot better now. Stephanie, the table right there, just.
Sorry. Just walked right into your camera.
Davis said that you guys needed me a copy of the chart.